I would like to call the August 3, 2022 Planning and Zoning Commission Regular Meeting to Order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Would you please call the roll?
Burton.
Present.
Tautfest.
I'm here.
Smithwick Alley.
Here.
Vodla.
Here.
Are there any changes to our agenda?
Any objections to approving the agenda? Hearing none. The agenda is approved. And then for the Planning and Zoning Commission minutes of July 6th, are there any changes to those minutes? Any objections to approving? Hearing none. The minutes are approved. Don't have any presentations with prior notice. But we do have a public hearing on Resolution PG 2022-008, a resolution recommending approval of amending Saldana Municipal Code. May I have a motion to approve? And if you don't mind, could you please state it, the full resolution for the record?
I move to approve Resolution PG 2022-008 recommending approval of amending Saldana Municipal Code, SMC Title 17 by establishing a new subchapter 17.10.390, accessory dwelling units, ADU, and amending sections of SMC Titles 113 and 17 establishing standards for accessory dwelling units.
Longest title ever. May I have a second?
A second.
Thank you. May we have the staff report, please?
Yes, thank you. So this is the accessory dwelling units code that's before you today. And at our last meeting, we had a work session, went through this. And I'm again going to go through it and try to highlight for you any changes that were made since our last meeting. There were a couple. The resolution is arranged in numerical order of the code. So you'll find first Section 108, which is our violation section, and then it'll continue on through, all the way through the final section, which is Title 17. And for your reading ease, the new text is underlined. Old text, or text that is being removed, is in brackets. We did have our attorney review this, and he recommended some additions. Actually, he recommended adding Sections 15, 17, and 18, which provide consistency with other sections of the code. And so I'll again go over those as we go through them. And as you know, there are three non- or semi-related housekeeping items that are also incorporated into this, and those two I'll call attention to as we go through them. So with that, we'll start at Section 1. And this amendment establishes violations of the accessory dwelling unit provisions as minor offenses and establishes fines for them. One fine is failure to obtain a permit, and the other fine is for illegal operation of an ADU. Section 2 is the first of several sections that deal with utilities. So Section 2 is a result of, again, our extensive changes to other sections of the code and how they're all tied together. In this case, the Water Service Utility Code is amended to allow for ADUs to share water service with the principal residential structure. Section 3, also in the water utility section of code, and also to allow for sharing a service connections. This is, also provides a waiver so that the utility manager has a little bit of flexibility in unique circumstances. The circumstance that he said comes up most often would be like a sink and a detached garage or workshop where someone wants to do that, and under our current code, wouldn't be allowed. This would provide a waiver so that it would be allowed to run off that same service that the house is on. Section 4 is similar to the proposed changes in the water section, except this section deals with sewer utility code. It's again to allow ADUs to share sewer service with the principal structure. And Section 5 is also similar to the water section, to allow for the sharing of service. And again, a waiver is included at the request of the utility manager for those unique situations. Section 6, this amendment adds two definitions to our zoning code. The first defines an ADU, and the second clarifies the meaning of owner occupied. We hadn't had a definition there, and that's one of the items that our attorney suggested that we do, that we add, is the definition of owner occupied. So that is included. And it reads, owner occupied means that the dwelling is the owner's primary residence and permanent place of abode. Section 7, this is one of the housekeeping items. It corrects an inconsistency with other sections of our residential zoning code. It removes camping as a principal use. And in the following section, Section 8, which we'll get to in a second, so it moves it from being a principal use to an accessory use, as it is in all of the other zoning And Section 8. Section 8, 9, 10, and 11 all add a similar subsection to each of these four zoning districts. So we're dealing with the single family, the single-family, two-family, rural residential, and multifamily. And they all now contain a provision that allows for accessory dwelling units, provided they comply with the special requirements in the new 1710-390 section. So that takes us to Section 12. This is, again, one of the housekeeping items. And what it does is adds the commercial district to the list of zoning districts where PUDs may be formed. And PUDs are planned unit developments. They're an effective way to manage large mixed-use developments that may not otherwise fit within traditional zoning codes. And as you know, we are encouraging mixed use in our downtown, but presently, our code does not allow PUDs in the commercial district. And this would cure that and correct that omission. Section 13, this amendment modifies a section of code that currently deals with accessory uses. It shortens the list of general standards from five standards to three. The Planning Commission at our last meeting made a couple suggestions on this. So in going from five standards to three, one of the standards that was removed was repetitive of another. Basically, standard number one was the same as standard number five. The language is a little bit different. And so we removed one of them. The second eliminated standard to be removed gets rid of the provisions that required ADUs to be used only for relatives or guests where no charges made and where no more than one bedroom could be used. So this, that provision was removed, and that provision historically has limited ADU development in the city. Section 14, this is the third and final housekeeping item in the resolution. This section adds the rural residential district to the existing list of zoning districts where only one principal building per lot is allowed. And this is being changed because, as I shared last time, we had an example of a 20-acre parcel and someone wanting to develop 20 homes on it without going through any type of land use control, any type of site review, any type of conditional use permit, planned unit development. It's a loophole in our code that needs to be closed. So this will, it will not affect someone's ability to apply for an ADU or for a PUD. They both will still be available to someone in their rural residential district. Section 15, so this amendment ensures consistency between our short-term rental code and the ADU code. This is one of those that our attorney suggested, because we do mention short-term rentals in our standards for ADUs. He suggested, well, then you need to add something in the short-term rental code that acknowledges these new standards. And so that's what Section 15 does. Section 16, then, is the bulk of this ordinance. It's what we spent most of our time in the workshop or the work session last time. It enacts all the new requirements for ADUs. It, you know, as you know, has the purpose and intent section, permit requirements, general standards, waivers, and violations sections. We did, based on comments from our last meeting, add two waivers. And I'll call your attention to those. That would be in Section 16E, waivers and modifications. So the first one refers to Section 1710-390C7, which is the size. There was concern that someone may want, may have a housing plan that, you know, is a standard 780 square feet or 775 square feet, and we only allow 750. What this waiver allows for is the administrative officer to waive up to 10% of the maximum allowable square footage. So 10% of 750 is an extra 75 feet that would be allowed under this waiver. The second waiver deals with Section 1710-390C8B, which is that front yard setback. So it states, "An ADU shall be at least 60 feet from the front line or at least 10 feet behind the front plane of the principal dwelling unit." And here, too, what this does is it provides an administrative waiver, not more than 30% of the required front yard setbacks. So, so if you've got a 60-foot setback, this would allow a waiver of up to 30% or 18 feet could be knocked off of that, and the person could still locate their, their structure at, I guess it would be 42 feet back from the front line. Okay. The other things, I'm not going to go over in detail in this section. You'll recall that accessory dwelling units are proposed to be permitted within the single family, the single-family, two-family, rural residential, multifamily zoning districts. Only one is permitted. They're permitted only on lots that meet our minimum lot size requirements. Building codes are required. The size is limited. Let's see, one dwelling unit on each parcel with an ADU may be used as a short-term rental. And there's provisions for when the permit would expire. So that's the basics of 1710-390 or Section 16. Moving on to 17, Section 17, to be consistent with Section 16 of the resolution, which says you cannot have variances, here our attorney said you need to modify the variance section of code, which is 1710-410, to include that requirement. So that's what that does. It makes 410 and 390 consistent with each other. Section 18, so this section, again, is a section of code recommended by our attorney. It provides, again, consistency between code sections. The new ADU general standards in 390 state that a zoning permit is necessary. And if you look at Section 18, you'll see that there's a list of items where it states where zoning permits are required, temporary uses, variances, conditional uses, and it adds accessory dwelling units, again, to provide that consistency. And that concludes my staff report.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff?
I'm sorry. Okay.
But we don't, but is primary, you mean primary residence? Is that, do we have a definition for primary?
That's what you're, okay. I do not see a definition for primary residence currently in our code. So when, when a definition is, is missing, and, and not all terms are defined, we go to the standard definition, the standard dictionary definition. And that's what we commonly do, and that's what our, our code allows for. So that's what we would do in this situation, is we would refer to the dictionary definition of primary residence. We'd probably define both terms.
Is it probably defined though in, for property tax?
It may be defined in a separate section of code, unrelated to zoning. And I'm not clear on the procedures when it's in a different section of code, whether it can be interpreted the same way in a different section of code. So that would be something that we would check with our attorney if, in fact, it is in a separate section. We'd confirm that it either can or can't be used for implementing this section. If not, we would go to the dictionary definition. Right.
Any other questions?
Just adding to that, I know when you apply for a grant, like for low-income housing or something, if it doesn't remain your primary residence, then you have to, like, pay back the grant. And I think there is, there will be a definition for that in that scenario, so, because it's probably going to be some percentage of time spent. So it probably is, I feel like it's something that should be defined by the city, or it might get sticky for you.
Good. Thank you.
Something on the similar lines, when Marge Mullin came in last time and spoke to this update, she, she gave us a scenario where she had a very small residence. It was a historic cabin, and that she might want to build one of these accessory dwelling units, but that the accessory dwelling unit would actually be larger than her cabin. And so what, for those real-life scenarios, is there a way, like in Section 6, we were talking about the difference between owner occupied and accessory dwelling units in Section B. Is it clear enough, or like, is that an allowable circumstance? Because I feel like she's probably not the only one, and I wouldn't want to hamper her from, I imagine what a lot of folks might do is, you know, build something like this and then have that, have a transition happen where they occupy an accessory dwelling unit-sized building as their primary residence, and then maybe rent out their, their larger house or something. Like, if my parents did that and they were downsizing and what, there's just so many, there's so many different living circumstances. I want to make it easy for folks to live. And, and I, maybe some of that will happen as we use the code.
Yeah, no, there's, as I mentioned last time, there's nothing in the code that would prohibit that from happening. And I'll, what I'll do is I'll double-check with our attorney to ensure that, that that's adequate, or whether it needs to be added. But my feeling is, is that would be adequate, that, that having no prohibition would, would allow that, or allow for that to happen.
Okay. And just one follow-up question. She, I don't, I can't remember if she mentioned it or if I just heard about it. But I, I would imagine that sometimes people would have a piece of property where they would want to, either if it's blank, not the 20 houses, but if they had a single lot in town and they wanted to build maybe two or three of these. Maybe it's a vacant lot, and they wanted them all to be 800 square feet. Is that a PUD, or is that like three accessory dwelling units? And then if we're only allowing one, are we restricting people from potentially building housing? Like, in your letter, I thought, I really appreciated your letter. It's like, these, this is offering new housing and flexibility, like, so, just trying to figure out, thinking through some of the real-life scenarios that people might want.
In that situation, right, we would look to the PUD code to allow for that type of development where you have more than two buildings that would be allowed by code, and they would have to meet the requirements of the PUD, which does have some basic lot size requirements and other basic requirements, as with any section of code, that would have to be met for the, for the PUD to be satisfied. But that would be, that would be the appropriate section of code that would be implemented in that case.
So for say, I'm picking on Marge, she's not here, but she did come in, and so maybe if she wanted to build two accessory dwelling units behind her cabin, it wouldn't actually be an ADU code that she would be following, then it would be the P.
PUD.
PDU.
Yep.
Little up.
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
And are they similar enough in terms of, like, fees and other things that it's, like, not going to be?
It's similar to a conditional use permit. The PUD is very similar to a conditional use permit in that it requires Planning Commission approval, review, and approval.
Okay.
The fee is similar to the conditional use permit, $250 plus tax.
Okay.
The process is, is also similar. It requires public, a public hearing, public notice.
Planned unit development.
Right.
Sorry, PUD, planned unit development. Okay.
Madam Chair, follow-up question to that. So PUD is not available in some of the zoning districts, correct? Or is it available in all the zoning districts?
It's not. So let's go back to the section of code here. So Section 12 identifies the districts where PUDs are allowed. And, and what this amendment does is include the commercial district, along with the rural residential, single-family, two-family, the multifamily district, and the limited commercial and institutional districts. So most zoning districts in the city are allowed PUDs.
Okay. Everything except for?
Industrial.
Industrial.
And, and just single-family, which is the, the most restrictive of any of the residential codes.
If Marge lives in, she, I think she does live in single-family.
She lives in the rural residential.
Oh, she does? Okay. Yeah.
Okay. So there's really only one zoning that doesn't allow, which would be the single-family?
Single-family and industrial.
And institutional, industrial.
Yep. Correct.
Sorry, thank you. This is sort of a meandering conversation, but I do think that perhaps if we had someone who wanted to have two ADU-type buildings in the single-family, like, is there any mechanism such, you know, the, the utility manager requested, like, waivers and modifications in certain sections? Is there either a conditional use permit or a waiver and modification in case there is a person who lives in single-family who wants to build two ADUs or two, which they couldn't do, PUDs, like, or, sorry, two additional small mother-in-law kind of cottages in their backyard, and they had room for it? But basically, there's no way for them to do that currently?
Yeah. As, as it stands now, no, there isn't any other type of exception. It's limited to one. I, I think of it as, that this is, it's, it's not a right of every landowner to be able to have. I mean, that's why we have our zoning codes, is to establish densities. And it's not a right, according to every zoning district, to have either one, two, or three, or four, or five. It depends on the district. So I, that's how I, I think of it. I think of this as a bonus density for these zoning districts that otherwise wouldn't be there. And so at this point, it's only limited to one. If you wanted more or an exception to that, you would have to amend the resolution tonight.
It might be nice to have some, some option that either is, needs review by the administration or us, in case there is a scenario where, you know, that is reasonable. And I would, I would like for this code to just allow enough flexibility that folks can do, you know, reasonable things on their property that will help their families grow and age. And I, so whether that's adding a conditional use permit option, or whether, like, a waiver to section, maybe the first section where it says, I don't, I don't know which section it would be best.
Madam Chair, I guess the problem that I see with that is that the intent here is pretty specific to, to allow someone with the necessary property to add one dwelling in it, consistent with the neighborhood or the other folks in that district, in that zoning. So if we, if we, if that becomes a slippery slope and someone has the property necessary to put two or three, you know, in a single fam, in a multifamily or duplex, whatever, that seems to negate the density, the broad spectrum of the density that, that, that zoning is trying to accomplish.
I was trying to say that, but you said it much better.
Yeah. No, I, that makes sense. I think in my mind, like, one or two, especially if you have two grandmas who want to take care of your baby, it's like, really, you know? But, so I would love to have there be an exception when it's appropriate for, like, two, but I see where you're coming from. Well, it's just that we have seven square miles, and we have so little residential area. So I think in our town, it's like slightly, we have a slightly, just such a small area to build, and most, most of it's already taken. So this is like a very creative and good way to use our residential space. Are there any other questions for John?
Madam Chair, just a point of order, we, we do have to open the, the public hearing. It'll be another opportunity after the hearing for questions. Okay?
Yeah. I just want to make sure staff didn't have any, because I don't think we have any public hearings. All right. The public hearing is now open. I don't have anybody online. So with no one else wishing to speak, the public hearing is now closed. This is always a bit messy, and I apologize. My question to you, John, is whether you would prefer me to make an amendment on Section 12, allowing PUDs in the single-family with a conditional use permit? Or whether you'd prefer me to allow a second ADU with a conditional use permit or some waiver to a different section?
Sue the chair. I would, so if you look at Section 16, this is our standards, at 16C3, it states, "One detached ADU may be created on a lot tract or parcel provided an existing habitable dwelling unit already exists on the lot tract or parcel." That might be an appropriate place to add a subsection for an amendment under that, where it could read, you know, well, however you want to do it. But a second detached unit may be approved by Planning Commission action or by a conditional use permit through the Planning Commission or something to that effect. If that's the, it might get in your, the gist, or, okay.
Yeah. Just because, also, like, you can't have, like, two small cottages of the same size on a single-family, even though that might be the same density. It'd just be, like, smaller.
It'd just be, like, smaller than a traditional house. But, so anyways, I, because that's not allowed in the single-family, because it is single-family, but it could be a single-family who wished to live in two small dwellings instead of one larger house.
So am I understanding you right? You want to, is that to be, or is that two things you're trying to accomplish?
No, I just wanted to make it, I think that, that's why I proposed either expanding the PUD section or what you just suggested.
Oh, I see. But you want to make it available? If I'm hearing you right, in the single-family only district in addition to the other ones? Is that what you're saying or no? Or was I just?
Sorry. I'm just trying to make this flexibility as easy to put into the code as possible. And I think your recommendation will.
Okay. All right. I, okay. Thanks.
I have a question. Hand my hand up. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, go ahead.
Hi. So what I'm hearing is you're saying you can put two ADUs in somebody's backyard? Is that what you're changing it to?
What, yeah, I was going to make an amendment to say that a second ADU could be placed with commission approval. So we would have to look at it on a case-by-case basis.
Wouldn't that, like, turn it into almost like a multifamily or like, you know, almost like a triplex or like apartments? It just seems like a lot of dwelling units on a city lot, in my opinion. I mean, aren't lots just, unless there's really big lots in the city, I don't know. But I know, like, mine's like a half acre and I couldn't imagine two small houses in the backyard. And then if my neighbor had two small houses in their backyard and somebody else, and then, I don't know, that would just seem like a lot of little houses everywhere.
Yeah, I think I could.
If there was a fire, I don't know. I just, it just doesn't seem that safe to me.
Thank you. I was trying to make sure that folks like Margie, who want to have plans to put up small units in, for people to use as residences, could do so, even if they didn't, Margie lives in the rural residential code, so she's fine.
Oh.
Yeah, just making sure that we are allowing enough flexibility so that folks can do reasonable things on their property.
Okay. I don't know how, are there real big lots in Saldana? Like, is there acreage? People have acreage in city limits?
Yeah, there's some lots that are two acres, but yeah, most, I think some lots that are a lot smaller varies.
John, I'm looking at the single-family housing zoning. Are there only, there's just 22 lots on West Goral. That's the entire single-family housing for the city of Saldana.
Everyone else can do a PUD or PU, yes.
But that's, I mean, it's not very restrictive. For that, that's the only place that someone can't do a planned unit development, but they can have an ADU.
Yeah.
And the lots are pretty small. I mean, that one might be big.
Yeah. No, that's a good point.
But the only thing they're not able to do is a planned unit development.
Yeah. But I guess that's a really good point. Because if everyone else.
And they're very small.
Is able to do the planned unit development, then there is a mechanism for allowing folks to put multiple smaller.
For everyone else except those 22 lots right there.
I recant.
Okay.
Proposed amendment, because I haven't made yet. I don't know the sizes of these, but I would guess that.
Charlene, did that? I take, I take, I take it back. Are you relaxed now?
I didn't, I didn't know people actually had, like, acreage. I was just thinking, you know, my lot, it's not that big, so.
And I know Zoom is kind of tricky. Do you have any other questions or comments?
No, I'll take my hand down. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Are there any other commissioner comments? Before we call the vote? All right. Can we, yeah, please call for the vote.
Dot West.
Yes.
Smithwick Alley.
Yes.
Anderson. Burton.
Yes.
Murray.
Yes.
Barbaza. Vodla.
Yes.
Yes, thank you. So first, I'll just say that your recommendation tonight for the ADUs will go to council. I'm thinking that we may try to do a work session with them as well, just because it is fairly complicated. And I think it was helpful for me and hopefully it was helpful for you guys when we went through that. And I think we'll do probably the same thing. So if that's something that you want to attend, you're certainly more than welcome to do that. I don't have any dates yet. But as we get them developed, I think either Jen or I will send out an email to you to let you know. So if you want to attend, you can do that. Jen asked that I remind anybody that still has an iPad to turn in, to please turn that in. And if you actually have it here tonight and you're supposed to turn it in, just give it to me and I will, I'll take it. Hopefully you have your new iPads. No? Maybe? Okay. All right. I don't want to take, I don't want to take it if you don't have a new one. Oh, okay. It's got top-secret information on probably then. The Riverfront Redevelopment, RFP, bid opening will be this Friday. So that's something that we're all really excited about, to see who's applying for that, that request for proposals and see what kind of options we might have. And then, let's see. The street rename for Wright Avenue, that did go to council after the last meeting and it was denied. And it was on a vote of two yes, four no, that it got rejected for the same reasons as you all stated in your deliberation. And one last plug for Music in the Park. This is the last month. Enjoy your Wednesdays. That's all I've got. Thanks.
Thank you. And Associate Planner, would you wish to make a comment or report? Sometimes Jen does, so you can if you want. But yes, thanks for filling in. And then commissioner comments? Sonia? Do you have any comments?
I'm good.
Okay. Yeah, thank you so much for being here. Charlene?
Just wish I was there where I'm at. It's like 100 degrees. It's really hot. I hope to see you guys all in person next month. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Go to Dennis.
Just, I thought I read in the paper today or yesterday that we also, and I don't think you mentioned the parking, the Aspen Hotel parking thing that you have something out, right?
That's correct. So I did not see today's paper, but the council approved the capital budget, which included some supplemental funding for the Aspen project, the Aspen parking lot project. That project is currently out to bid right now. And I believe bids will be due the middle of the month, the 14th or 15th of this month. I don't recall specifically the day. But it's, so that would go to the council then on their meeting, I believe it's the 24th of August, for approval of that project. And our goal is to break ground in September once Music in the Park is over. Thank you.
Thanks for all the work on this. It's, it can be fairly confusing. But obviously, you know, we want to provide this avenue to our community and allow for flexibility. And what I've seen here tonight, as well as the fruitful discussions is with these waivers and modifications, as well as the alternatives to, such as going through a PUD, this is, this does allow quite a bit of flexibility. So great work.
No comment.
Thank you. Thank you for all the work on this. I like that the city seeks more efficient and flexible use of existing residentially zoned land. I think this is a good step forward and appreciate the back and forth in the conversation. I would love, if there is any follow-up on Mr. Murray's question about the definition of primary residence, I do think that has, that will come to bear on this. So if any, if you have any, anything on that, can you email all of us or just bring it up at the next meeting? That'd be great. Thank you. All right. With the next regular meeting of our Planning and Zoning Commission will be held September 7th at 5:30 in person in the chambers. And they're also broadcast live on the city's website. So with that, our meeting is adjourned.